From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, good morning. Welcome to the regular meeting of Tuesday, June 2, 2020, Board of Supervisors. Board to reconvene. The first item is roll call.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Squibner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
The next item is the Salute to the Flag. It will be led this morning by Chairman, or excuse me, Supervisor Mick Gleason. I almost gave you a promotion there. And please remain standing in conclusion of that for a moment of prayer, silence, and meditation, whichever you prefer.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Please join me in salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are done with the flag salute, but we are right about to go into the consent agenda.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Okay, consent matters are on the calendar for matters that are considered to be routine and non-controversial by staff. They may be voted on all at once by one vote, or if members of the board or public would like to hear them separately, they may request to do so now. Kathy, have you received any information on the consent agenda?
No, Madam Chair, I have not received any comment regarding any consent agenda items.
And nobody's on the line waiting?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Consent matters begin on page two, and they include items one through four and items seven and eight. On page three, items nine through sixteen. On page four, items seventeen through twenty-three. On page five, items twenty-four through thirty-one. On page six, items thirty-two through thirty-nine. On page seven, items forty, forty-one, and forty-four through forty-six. On page eight, items forty-seven through fifty-three. On page nine, items fifty-four through sixty-one. And finally, on page ten, items sixty-two and sixty-three. Colleagues, your wishes? Would any of you like to pull a matter or hear more information from staff?
Motion on consent.
We have a motion on consent.
Second.
Second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. We're going to move to item five, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Item five is public presentations, and this portion of the agenda is reserved for matters that are not on today's agenda, but are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. So are there any members of the public, Kathy? I understand we have some input.
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have one person who is supposed to call in. They have not yet called in, so I'm going to read public comment that has been received via the email.
Okay.
And then we will check and see if we have any callers on the line for public comment. Your board received 25 letters related to the George Floyd death in Minneapolis, Minnesota. The majority of these letters are a form letter, so I'm going to read a sample of the form letter, and then I will insert individual comments, so I'm not going to read the same letter 25 times.
You'll read what is specific to each or unique to the letters you will read into the record?
Exactly.
Excellent. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, so, most letters state, "On May 29, 2020, Bakersfield City Police Chief Greg Terry issued a statement on the death of Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis. He said in part, 'I immediately directed our training staff to review the death of Mr. Floyd with every Bakersfield police officer for a clear understanding that such actions are not acceptable in our society. So far, Kern County Sheriff Youngblood has not made a statement on Mr. Floyd's death. As the most prominent law enforcement official in the county and an elected leader since 2006, Sheriff Youngblood should join his colleagues locally and nationwide and issue a statement. Sheriff Youngblood, will you direct your training staff to review Mr. Floyd's death in every sheriff's deputy to ensure, with every sheriff's deputy, to ensure they have a clear understanding that such actions are not acceptable in our society?'" This form letter was submitted by Pooja Patel, Myra Estrada, Elena Vermillion, Myra Rios, who also had an additional comment that states, "The murder of George Floyd in broad daylight has sent shockwaves through our country and highlighted the issue of police brutality that we've yet to reckon with. Kern County is no exception. As the 2015 report in The Guardian stated, police in Kern County have killed more people per capita than any other American county in 2015." Also, from Chula German, she included this additional comment, "Sheriff Youngblood, our system is broken, and it needs to be fixed right away. These officers involved in George's arrest need to be in jail right now. They need to be held without bail, prosecuted, convicted, and held accountable for Mr. Floyd's death and their lack of work ethics, morals, and given life without possibility of parole, a life for a life. Sheriff Youngblood, will you direct your training staff to review Mr. Floyd's death with every sheriff's deputy to ensure they have a clear understanding that such actions are not acceptable in our society? We, the people, are asking you, Mr. Youngblood, to ensure us that this type of action/behavior from the sheriff's deputies will have severe repercussions, and that all deputies will be held accountable for such despicable behavior." In addition, the following three writers requested, "Sheriff Youngblood, does the behavior of officers in Minneapolis meet your expectations for law enforcement officers in this country?" This is from James Spencer, Joshua Sella, and Noreen Hosen. In addition, the question was asked by Punjit Singh, Amy Armani, Ravi Patel, Kelly Herrera, and Susan Beatty. "Sheriff Youngblood, do you believe the death of Mr. Floyd was horrific and that the actions taken by the police officers in Minneapolis were inexcusable?" Kelly Herrera also writes, "So far, Kern County Sheriff Youngblood has not made a statement on Mr. Floyd's death. Instead, he recently tweeted, 'As far as the BLM protests, don't let this be another Minnesota. Whatever happens, us good old boys got your back.'" As the most prominent law enforcement official in the county, Sheriff Youngblood should join his colleagues locally and nationwide and issue a statement condemning the actions of the police officers in Minnesota instead of using his platform to address the murders of black people at the hands of police across this country. He shamefully chose to platform, to signal to white people that his good old boys have their back. Also, Susan Beatty asked the question, "My question is to Sheriff Youngblood, is he going to make a similar statement on behalf of our sheriff's department?" Another question asked by Charles Ferguson, Vanessa Chavez, and Lisa Baldridge, "Sheriff Youngblood, do you unequivocally condemn what the officers in Minneapolis did and believe that a criminal investigation is proper?" From Pinky Guman, "Sheriff Youngblood, what policies and practices are you implementing in Kern County to prevent a horrific event like Mr. Floyd's death?" From Chula German, "BPD, SPD, and all Kern County Police Department, we're asking you to do your work. You're here to protect and serve, not to take lives like the Minneapolis PD did. Please do your job. We want the community to trust you, not fear you." Priya Patel states, "Sheriff Youngblood, across the country, police officers are taking a knee in solidarity with protesters demanding an end to racist institutions and systems. As someone who leads a police force that kills more people than any other force in the country, what will you do to stop those you lead from killing more in our community? Sheriff Youngblood, I do not feel safe with you as our sheriff." From Dolores Huerta, "Sheriff Donnie Youngblood should make a statement in these perilous times. He has identified himself as a leader in law enforcement, and now is the time to use that leadership and to denounce the killing of people of color by police. We should expect no less from him, as he has always been in the forefront, making statements that have not been helpful to end the racism that exists in our community." Comment from Yuseidra Osby, President of All of Us or None, "So far, Kern County Sheriff Youngblood has not made a statement on Mr. Floyd's death. As the most prominent law enforcement official in the county and leader of a department that is involved in more officer-involved shootings per capita than any other country, Sheriff Youngblood should join his colleagues locally and nationwide and condemn police brutality and racism. The sheriff's department's reputation for violence is well-known, notorious, and intolerable. This board and Sheriff Youngblood's office need to start making affirmative steps to change today. Sheriff Youngblood, will you direct your training staff to review Mr. Floyd's death and every sheriff's deputy to ensure that they have a clear understanding that such actions are not acceptable in our society? When can we expect to see results? What will you do to ensure that no harm is done to the people exercising their rights as we speak?" Comment from Lindsay Andreas, "I am a local attorney who resides in Supervisor Maggard's district. I addressed the board today regarding police brutality and systemic racism in Kern County. In 2015, Kern County Police killed more people per capita than any other county in the nation. Since then, we've had years to reflect and institute real change to the law enforcement culture in Kern County. Unfortunately, Sheriff Youngblood has been notably silent on the death of Mr. George Floyd in Minnesota and the use of force by the officers which took his life. The Kern County Sheriff's Office should not only condemn actions like the officers used in Minnesota, but should also take immediate steps to better Kern County, including setting up an independent citizen oversight board with the power to keep bad officers off the street, ensure that all deputies are equipped with body cameras and keep the cameras on, specifically recruit officers of color who live in the communities that they serve and require regular training to officers on implicit bias, stereotype threat, and de-escalation tactics." Comment from Lori Passante, "On May 29, I was so grateful to read Bakersfield Police Department Chief Terry's crystal-clear public condemnation of Minneapolis Police Officer's horrific killing of Mr. George Floyd. To Sheriff Youngblood, you are the chief law enforcement officer, official for Kern County. You set the standard, tone, and example for all Kern County law enforcement. Will you, Sheriff Youngblood, also clearly and publicly condemn the inexcusable and humane actions of Minneapolis Police when Officer Derek Chauvin kneeled on Mr. Floyd's neck for 8 minutes and 46 seconds? To the Kern County Board of Supervisors, I request that this board recognize today during this meeting your own public condemnation of the killing of George Floyd by having a moment of silence lasting a full 8 minutes and 46 seconds in honor of Mr. Floyd and all other victims of police brutality. Thank you in advance for your response." Comment from Wendy, "In an emotional response to George Floyd's family Sunday night, the Minneapolis Police Chief says, in his mind, all four officers involved in the Floyd's killing bear the same responsibility. Mr. Floyd died in our hands, so I see that as being complicit." Chief Maderia Aradondo told Sarah Sidner, "Silence and inaction, you're complicit. If there was one solitary voice that would have intervened, that's what I would have hoped for. Sheriff Youngblood, do you believe all four officers bear the same responsibility? Do you believe in cases of silence and inaction, there is complicity?" Sheriff Maderia Aradondo said, "I am just hopeful that we have reached a watershed moment here, and we will see some meaningful reforms in terms of the way we deal with bad officers and the way we deal with police officers involved in criminal conduct that completely undermines the good work of the vast majority of police officers. Sheriff Youngblood, do you agree that we've reached a watershed moment? Do you feel there should be reform in terms of the way we deal with bad officers and the way we deal with police officers involved in criminal conduct that undermines the good work of the vast majority of police officers?" Last comment from Tamara Lane, "I have one question for the sheriff. Sheriff, does the behavior of the officers in Minneapolis meet your expectations for law enforcement officers in this country? How has your leadership role impacted your recent decision-making in our county?" That is the last written public comment, and let me see if we have anyone on the line. Thank you. Yes, we do. We have Nadine Escalante on the line. Ms. Escalante, if you would hit star six to unmute your mic and address the board, please.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I'm Chairman Letitia Perez. My comments are about the brutality of what happened with Mr. Floyd, of course, and the one question I'd like to pose through the chair to Mr. Gleason is, Mr. Gleason, after watching this man die, has your stance on bending the knee with NFL players changed? Because I do remember earlier in the year, if not last year, your statement was, in a meeting, that you refused to watch NFL because your wife had suggested it because the player bent the knee. I hope all of you understand the reason why Colin Kaepernick started bending the knee and the rest of the NFL players started bending the knee with him. And I hope at this point, our Board of Supervisors will start taking a knee with the rest of the world. This is an issue. This has been an ongoing issue. This has been something I have brought to your guys' attention throughout the years over and over when it comes to our local police. I thank Bakersfield Police Department for speaking up and saying something, but as some of you are aware, I am a part of a group with community policing with our Bakersfield Police Department where we meet and have community meetings discussing police issues. We have had this conversation, I have had this conversation personally with our sheriff's department. They are trying to push forward with having a community policing. So it would be great if you guys could talk to Sheriff Youngblood and suggest, continue thinking in this format and pushing forward with the people that you've already discussed these ideas with previously. Because we know now that the world is ready to wake up. I have talked to so many more people this weekend who are ready to start joining the conversations that we already have been placed the various years prior to his death. And to you, Ms. Perez, I support you wholeheartedly. But this conversation about police brutality isn't just a black issue. And then having a discussion and labeling it just the MLK unity makes it a divided topic. And when I am friends with victims that have died in the hands of BPD or Kern County Sheriff, it is offensive to these families. So I'm asking you, please, all the boards, to understand it is the entire community's concern, every color of this community. And so, yes, we love having the Martin Luther King Community Initiative plan that you have in place, Ms. Perez, to want to participate, but we're asking them to join us at the three other discussions that we've already had open that none of them have ever chose to participate in. We don't need to divide this nation any further. We do not need to divide Kern County any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Do we have any more? Kathy, anyone else waiting to speak?
No, that concludes public comment.
Okay, so that includes the emails that we have received, including, and then, of course, the testimony, live testimony, as is waiting to be heard now.
That is correct. And for the record, your board received copies of all emails submitted. You have them in front of you. You received them previously. They are part of the record.
Very good. Thank you very much. We're going to move to the public, excuse me, board member announcements or reports. We're going to begin with the Director of Public Health for COVID-9 update, Mr. Matt Constantine. You are quite famous now in the community, very well-known and appreciated, criticized by some, of course, as is natural to such incredibly perilous times. I appreciate your leadership and look forward to your update and report, as is the public. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. We provide twice-a-week updates, in this chamber is actually, for the press. So we did report out on some of the information yesterday, as we do twice a week. We are continuing to see some elevated numbers, as you've noticed. We have been trying hard to instill the message about taking heed of those numbers, ensuring personal responsibility, making sure we remember to take those actions to heart because it matters. These aren't just numbers, these are people. They affect all of us. We did briefly report out on some of our challenges with our skilled nursing facilities. They are suffering disproportionately for these, the effects of the virus, and that really is an ongoing, strong concern of ours. We did report out yesterday, too, that the state has issued a second and third round of antivirals that is effective towards COVID-19 on reducing the duration. Remdesivir is the name of the drug. So we were lucky enough to have 130 doses that came down last week, and we are supposedly going to receive 167 doses this week. So those are, that's good work. It's good to have it there.
Matt, who's receiving those? How does that work?
So the state receives their allocation, and then they proportionately release the doses to the counties.
Per population or per infection?
Per cases, per number of hospitalized cases.
I see.
And then at the county level, working with the hospital CEOs, we then distribute it proportionally based on the number hospitalized in each hospital itself. So the more, the more cases a hospital has, the more doses of the drug you get. So it's a system we kind of worked out internally with the CEOs. And then also, we have been taking the rather unusual stance of going into skilled nursing facilities and actually testing the employees of the skilled nursing facilities themselves. They have a requirement from the state to start. They gave them three weeks to develop a plan. We didn't want to wait. So we did hire several nurses, and because of the heat, in fact, they show up at 4:30 in the morning, and they go out to some of these skilled nursing facilities and, in fact, test the employees ourselves. We are booked through the month of June, and we're hopeful after that they'll be able to prop themselves up and start their own testing program. Madam Chair, that just quickly summarizes some of the activities we're doing. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Where do you feel we are in the management of this particular outbreak?
In skilled nursing facilities or as a community?
In general, as a community. Where do you feel we are? How do you feel we are managing what is a day-by-day-changing, nightmarish scenario of which I do not envy you to be at the forefront of, but certainly folks want to know, where do we see ourselves? What does the foreseeable future look like to you?
So we have made tremendous progress in the last couple months. We've all made some real sacrifices on staying at home. We've had a lot of impacts to our businesses. We've done a lot to flatten that curve, meaning to reduce the potential burden on our hospital system. That's the whole point behind this. So I think we've done well. People have listened, they've heeded the message. It is working. But we're not done. We have a lot of work ahead of us. We are concerned that some of the modeling shows that cases will continue to rise for the next few months. We're concerned that our hospital system remains robust and able to address those. We've made a lot of improvements in the systems. We have a lot of capability. I feel good where we are, but that is not to say that we have not overcome this challenge. There are some significant challenges, I think, coming. So we need to stay true to the message. We need to continue the efforts. We should not stop. I'm grateful that the state has given the county some ability to reopen certain businesses with certain conditions, but we need to be careful. We need to use those, the guidance documents the state has given us, to limit that transmission. Because our concern is if our numbers go back up and our capabilities in our hospital diminish, that that puts us in a bad position. We need to remain, we need to have that capacity remaining in our county.
For those who think we're out of the woods, Mr. Constantine, and are out running around town, I see them, you see them. I know they're eager to be out and not cooped up at home. I certainly am as well. What would you say to them? What is a... What is a simple message, as are the leader in public health? What would you say to folks who feel so relieved that we've gotten past Corona?
We're all anxious to move on, right? We're all anxious to resume our normal lives. But COVID-19 is still here. It is still a threat. It's still a risk to our system. It's still a risk to us, especially to our grandparents or our parents or our older neighbors. This presents a real risk. So we cannot let off. We have to continue the efforts. Again, there's potential risks coming down the road. And the state is watching this very carefully. They actually watch Kern County's numbers and all the other counties' numbers, their statistics, very carefully. And they are reporting out daily now about how are the counties doing? How is the percent hospitalized changing over time? How many ICU beds do we have available? That is being tracked real time. The hospitals report to the state, and the state reports that out. So I say we need to continue our efforts. Let's not lose the momentum and the improvements we've made. But we're not through this. We have some hard work ahead of us.
Mr. Constantine, thank you. I'd ask my colleagues, I see Supervisor Maggard has punched in. Is that for now, Supervisor?
Actually, it's for board member comments. I didn't realize he was going to go first.
Got it. I'll get right to you in a moment, Supervisor. Would any other of my colleagues, Supervisor Gleason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt, thanks a lot. Appreciate you and your team, all the work you're doing. I sincerely do. Everybody does. Can you talk to me about, you gave us a good general overview of how you see this thing rolling out. Could you talk a little bit about, more particularly, about the SNFs and what's going on there? What percentage of our problem is there? And how we are focused, our resources, to help support the state in their efforts to control the SNFs?
Yeah, so these skilled nursing facilities, there's 19 of them in the county. They are completely and fully regulated by the state. In fact, the county never even enters. We don't go in. But as we've reported out twice a week now, we have had a number of employees, and more importantly, residents, that have tested positive. We have two facilities that are really causing us concern, in so much that their staffing diminished. They were not able to, at least at one site, were not even able to staff a shift. We had to ask, in a flurry of activity, to try to find medical volunteers to come in and help care for these individuals. I think they present one of the most vulnerable groups to our response to this disease. And it remains.
The most vulnerable group are the people that go there to help support?
No, the ones that are in there. I'm sorry, sir.
The patients, the residents, excuse me, the residents of the SNFs.
Yes. They are most susceptible to this, and the numbers show that. One skilled nursing facility has had 18 residents die from COVID-19. And it still presents a risk.
Matt, what percentage of the deaths in Kern County come from SNFs? Do you understand, do you know that?
Yeah, so it's about, it generally runs more than 50%. So the overall deaths for the county, 50% or more, and that number changes day to day, occur from skilled nursing facilities.
Are you satisfied that, understanding that, the importance of that number, that the state is supporting to, you know, in effort to, you know, reinforcing our efforts to help control that population? Are you satisfied that they're doing a good job of managing 50% of our deaths?
No, sir. I don't think they're doing a good job. I don't think the state is. I think we should do more.
So how do we, what do we do about that? How do we fix that?
We need to, we need to really double our efforts. We need to, we need to do more. The system that's working now, that's in place now, is not working. And I worry, we're talking about two skilled nursing facilities. There's 19 of them. And I worry about how this will impact them. So this is a state responsibility, fully and completely a state responsibility. They're the ones that come in and look to see if they have good infection control procedures. They're the ones to see, are they providing the right care? From what our limited involvement, they're not. As we watch how the employees have been trained, it's insufficient to control this disease. As we talk about testing, they have been reluctant, some of the facilities, to test their employees because they were concerned if we found one of their employees was positive, well, then that employee has to go home, and how are they going to staff the facility? We're missing the whole point. This is not managing the problem.
So I heard you say earlier that you think, looking at the general perspective of how we're flattening the curve, you said we've done a good job.
Yes, sir.
If you were to pull the SNF data out of that, would you look at that SNF data and say, "We flattened the curve"?
So I think it's important to realize that the SNF data is not helping the curve at all. So it is offsetting the strides that we have made. Now, the number of individuals in a skilled nursing facility that are positive is small in the overall comparison of the county, but it represents more than half of those that have died from COVID-19.
So what are we doing about that? So I hear what you're saying, and I believe you. What are we doing to fix that? Does the state understand your concerns?
No, sir. So we have been on multiple calls. Supervisor Maggard, in particular, has been on a number of calls with us, with state representatives, saying, "We need more. We need more help. We need more oversight. We need more involvement. We need you here." In fact, we've actually gone and pulled in people to do sort of informal assessments at the county level. We don't have authority. But even a little bit of time we're in there, there are significant issues that we're observing.
So I'm interested in making sure that we have documented, understand our position, and we've asserted ourselves properly. But I'm more concerned with changing, helping you change, create the effect that we want to create. And what do we need to do to create that change?
And I think Supervisor Maggard has an item for us to consider next. And I think we've been talking a little bit about what we could do to change this dynamic, because it's not working. So I'll perhaps defer to Supervisor Maggard, but I think he has a game plan for us.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Constantine, there may be more questions for you. Stay close. Thank you for your hard work. We really appreciate you. We're going to move to Supervisors Maggard and Supervisor Scrivner. I see you're up, Supervisor Maggard. I really appreciate all of your hard work and attention to this issue. Your leadership is more valuable than ever. Supervisor Maggard, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, colleagues. I wanted to talk this morning for a moment about the skilled nursing facilities and the efforts of our Back to Business Ad Hoc Committee about that. Not only is there a threat, I'll talk about in a moment, to our effort to get back to business in Kern County and sustain and kind of replace those jobs, reinvigorate those jobs that have been lost or suspended. The biggest threat to the public health, concentrated in any sector of Kern County, is in these skilled nursing facilities. I want to thank Shannon Grove and Vince Fong for their help in going directly to the state to ask for help. But frankly, the state is not doing enough. Here are the kind of things that we're observing in those skilled nursing facilities. An appalling number of staff members are not showing up for work. Some of that is because they are ill. Some of that is because they are afraid. But the bottom line is that the 19 skilled nursing facilities all face the same threat. And that threat is that staff may not show up for work. When that happens, it jeopardizes everybody in those facilities, not only the residents, but also the other staff members. We have discovered that there are times when there is no management on-site, and particularly in one facility, in the Kingston facility. And the reason I've been so involved in it is the Kingston facility is on a real road in my district. So several weeks ago, that's why I became engaged in talking to the state and being so involved in it. But these are spread out across the entire county. They affect all of our districts. The segregation inside the facility, the isolation is the more proper term, of those patients who are positive from those patients who are not yet positive is not adequately being maintained. The crossover of staff from those that deal with positive patients to the same staff sometimes that deal with non-positive patients causes the disease to move from one side of the facility to the other. The tracing of those who are working at the facility who also moonlight at other facilities, and it appears that this may be one of the fundamental reasons for the spread of the disease being so rampant inside of the skilled nursing facilities, is that, and some of it's due to the rate of pay that they make, so they're anxious to make more money. I'm talking about the staff people now. And I'm not faulting them. They're trying to make a living. But bottom line is, these places are not being managed adequately because many of these people that work in the facility are working at other facilities. And although we've asked the state to help, the state has not been, it's just not a nimble enough organization to be able to give us what we need. So our Back to Business Ad Hoc Committee is suggesting that we designate a skilled nursing facility accountability officer. And I've discussed this with Matt Constantine, and I would like, Matt, to be able to speak to this in just a moment to make sure that I'm being consistent with your directives and your desires as well. But I think it's time for us to designate a Kern County skilled nursing facility accountability officer. This person would go, be directly, have the authority vested in her, I'll tell you in a minute who this is, by us, to go to these facilities, to designate staff to go to these facilities and hold them accountable. And if they are not doing what they should be doing, that we will publicly discuss them by name because it is that vital, not only to the health and lives of those that are in the facilities, but to the rest of Kern County. The number is 22, Supervisor Gleason. Out of the 39 people who have passed away in Kern County are somebody directly related to a skilled nursing facility. That's 56%. That is tragic. And I have received calls and been contacted by family members whose family member is in one of those facilities, and they are terrified. Their family member is terrified. They can't get information. They can't go in to visit their loved one. The governor has put in place requirements that don't allow anybody to visit. So bottom line is, these people are isolated in there, and they are terribly vulnerable. It is a nightmare occurring before our very eyes. And we need some way to hold them more accountable. Besides the threat to the lives of the people there, the number-one threat, in my observation, to our ability to continue to get Kern County back into business and to sustain the jobs that have been lost and have been imperiled is the number of hospitalizations. And while, as the number of deaths is horrible, we have had thousands of positive cases in Kern County, nearly 2,400 positive cases countywide. But the concentration of those positive cases that are coming from the skilled nursing facilities and those that have to be hospitalized from those skilled nursing facilities is at the, that is at the very forefront of, at the tipping point of whether or not we, the ratio of our hospitalizations to our positive tests goes up more and more because those are the most vulnerable patients. So our managing the level of hospitalizations that are coming out of those skilled nursing facilities is vital to our ability to be able to not only protect the lives of those that are in there, but that we can get these jobs back in order. So in working with Matt Constantine and in discussing with the chief of our fire department, because the person I'm going to suggest that we designate as our skilled nursing facility accountability officer directly reports to the chief of the fire department, that person is Georgiana Armstrong. She is, I mean this with all affection, Georgiana. She is a bulldog. She will not, she will relentlessly pursue with all the passion that's necessary to make sure that these facilities are run correctly. She is the perfect fit for this. She is currently our emergency services manager. And I would like to, on behalf of the Back to Business Ad Hoc Committee, suggest to our board that we designate Georgiana Armstrong as our Kern County skilled nursing facility accountability officer. Mr. Constantine, would you like to say anything in addition to that?
Supervisor Maggard, through the chair. I appreciate the help and the efforts. This is far bigger than public health. We need all of our focus on this. Right now, we have multiple different people, different organizations, working on this effort. What is missing is one person to put it together and be our voice and our ability to run those issues to the state and then report to the board, perhaps even report out publicly at the press events, if that's what your board wants. But I think this added resource, especially from Ms. Armstrong, is needed and will be very welcomed. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I want to clarify, I didn't make this clear before. I don't want the chief's jaw to drop here. We're not asking Ms. Armstrong to do something that takes her away from her current responsibilities. She plays a vital role in Kern County's emergency response effort. But she is willing to step forward and help take on some new responsibilities to help us in this way. So Chief, would you like to say anything? And lastly, Ms. Armstrong, would you like to say anything?
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. I fully support this operation. I think Georgiana will be a very needed and strong voice for those that don't have a voice. So the fire department supports it. They have a very heavy workload at the EOC. And so it's just like everyone else in today's atmosphere, working hard. But there's that fine line, and I believe she can do it, and she's the right person. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Ms. Armstrong.
Good morning, everybody. And I want to thank you for your confidence in me, and I appreciate it. I personally feel that the issue, that the situation with our skilled nursing facilities is our most critical aspect of what we're doing, that and continuing the COVID testing in the community. Your EOC has been activated since the proclamation was issued. So while your board is designating a point of contact, we will be working within the EOC structure. We will be tapping other departments. This is a huge job. We will be looking for additional county staff. We will take this task and break it down into lanes and specific tasks and bring people in to focus on those particular issues till we can build a comprehensive picture of what's going on. We want to assist these skilled nursing facilities to meet what the state requires them to do because it is in our benefit for them to succeed, not only as a county, but for the residents within those facilities. But we will not hesitate if we identify issues that require immediate remediation, to make those known to the state, to public health, to your board, in whatever transparency your board directs us to operate. So I'm honored. I'm a little scared. But we are willing to step up to this and give it our best shot to support this to the best of our ability.
We are thankful for your willingness to serve, and I have every confidence in you. And I'm just grateful for your willingness to help us with this. The lives of people are at issue, and you're the perfect person to help us get there. So, colleagues, that's my recommendation. I have a statement I'd like to make, but I want to wait till after Supervisor Scrivner makes his remarks as well.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Supervisor Scrivner, do you want to wait for Supervisor Gleason's response?
I'd be happy to.
Supervisor Gleason, go ahead, because he's the other half of the ad hoc.
Georgiana, could you get back where? I think that, thanks, I think it's an outstanding idea. It sounds really good. And you are the perfect person to do that. I think bulldog is an understatement. Do you understand what your daily tasks are? Are you being told that you have, you know, this, 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 this to do? Are you being, are you being put into a place where you have a cloud of mist and you're trying to sift through it to find out what to do and how to do it? Like, I heard Supervisor Maggard say that you need to control schedules of nurses and helpers and making sure that the right people in the right places. But that's only a minor part, I think, of what we're asking you to do. But yet, I don't know exactly what we're asking you to do. Do you have a clearer understanding than I do of what your tasks will be when you assume this responsibility?
I have a somewhat better idea. I believe that it will become more clear as we step into this. I have been reviewing the all-facilities letter that are, letters that have been issued by the state, which are directly to the skilled nursing facilities. One of the key requirements the state has put on these facilities is that they are to complete and submit what they're calling a mitigation plan. It's basically their COVID response plan. Those were due to the state June 1st. And June 1st. So our first step will be to gather those plans, to review those plans, to make sure that we believe that whatever the skilled nursing facilities are saying they're going to do adequately meets the task. And then, one of the issues that we've been discussing with public health, as the state has established an onsite visit schedule of six to eight weeks intervals, we believe that that is not adequate. So we will be looking for local people to be in the SNFs more frequently and to ensure that the guidance that has come from the state on infection control, on cohorting, on testing, on personal protective equipment, donning and doffing, the usage, the, all of that, that that is being done to the level that will protect the residents and the staff to the best that we can. I am in a new world. I am not a medical person. So I have been meeting with public health. I met with Jared Levitt yesterday from Kern Medical, who has come from a skilled nursing facility administration background to give me SNF 101. And we're just going to step into this as best we can, as quickly as we can, with the documentation that we have.
Great, thanks. And I just want to let Supervisor Maggard and Supervisor Scrivner know And I just want to let Supervisor Maggert, Supervisor Scrivner know that I'm going to support them completely in this committee. Nothing but success from beginning, and I'm very interested in making sure that you succeed, and I will work with them to help you succeed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank Supervisor Maggert for his laser focus on this issue of these skilled nursing facilities and the danger that they present to our overall numbers. I mean, truly, it's driving a lot of our negative data points when it comes to COVID, so thank you, Supervisor, for focusing so much on this. Just want to, I want to echo the support for Ms. Armstrong and her ability, I believe, to lead this effort. She does such a marvelous job for us and everything that we've ever tasked her with, and we certainly are in a new world, and I think you put that aptly. I want to just speak a little bit when it comes to the hospital capacity issue. Mr. Constantine mentioned, and I think we all need to be reminded, that's why we shut down, was because we were concerned about our hospitals being overwhelmed. That's what we were told was the goal, to ensure that we didn't have a system that couldn't respond to the number of critical patients that come in, and our, some of our numbers are creeping a little bit, and we need to make sure that we stay on top of that. And so I just want the board to know that tomorrow night, we have a call scheduled with all of the 10 acute care hospitals with their CMOs, their chief medical officers, their CEOs. We're on the agenda to speak to them specifically about how we will respond if we do see the models proving true, where our numbers for ICU patients do increase. And so, we're very much focused on making sure that we can respond to that if that does in fact happen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scrivner, are there any other comments from the board? I am going to make some comments about what is happening in the country, but I wanted to give my colleagues an opportunity, either wrap up their remarks on COVID. Supervisor Maggert, I know you had a statement to make, and then I do have a few thoughts I'd like to share from my heart with my colleagues and the public. Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I would like to make that referral to the board this morning. Could we facilitate then bringing it back as an action item and a discussion for the entire board, so we can take the appropriate action to move forward? So, thank you for that. I want to talk for a second, and I thank the board for their support on that. I want to talk for a second this morning about the tragedy that has followed in the tragic death of George Floyd. Most of the marches, most of the consequences of the marches through neighborhoods in the greater Bakersfield area have occurred in the 3rd district, in the Westchester neighborhoods and in the Oleander neighborhoods. Most of the Oleander part that is affected is in the 3rd district, some of it's in the 2nd, but most of it's in the 3rd. So I think it's appropriate for me to say something this morning about that. The country and myself are rightfully outraged at what we witnessed in the death of George Floyd. There is no justification for that, and I urge us to allow, us as a community, us as a nation, to allow the full weight of the American justice system to fall upon those that caused and did not intervene in the tragic death of Mr. Floyd. So, but the way our system works is that that system, the justice system, needs to move through its process. Already an arrest has been made. I'm sure other consequences will result, and the full weight of the American justice system will fall on those that are responsible, and I look forward to that happening. So I want to urge people to be patient and let that process go forward. I wanted to speak specifically to two groups this morning. I've had this conversation with people in our community, in public and in private, and I think it's appropriate for me to do it here this morning. And the first is to speak to those that are protesting. Clearly, I support the right of any American to protest. We have a freedom of speech and a freedom of expression in our country that is assured by our constitution, and I completely support those that want to protest and make their voice and concern be known. But I want to make sure, I want to speak to those that are involved in the protest, particularly in Kern County, in that there are a few, and I've been, last night I was privileged to be at a prayer vigil at the Liberty Bell as that evening's protest was beginning to ramp up, and some of the protesters came into the crowd, and were standing around the Liberty Bell with us as we were praying. That was an interesting experience. But I, and last night was much, much more improved over what we'd seen before. I guess that's an evidence of the power of prayer to quell the tensions that, and to soothe the tensions that were exhibited in the nights before. But I want to speak to those that are protesting, because there are a few in our country, and a few in our, relatively few in the country, and there are a few locally, who aren't there to voice concern or outrage over what happened to Mr. Floyd. They are instead there to be anarchists, and to disrupt, and divide, and bring fear into our neighborhoods. And I would urge those that are there for the right purposes at those protests to not allow this teachable moment, this moment where we can change the culture in our country, to be hijacked by those few that would use it for their own purposes. So, I would urge, and we saw this exhibited last night, those that are there for the right reason, those that are there expressing their concerns, were helping to quell the demonstrations of, that were inappropriate last evening, and I hope and pray that we will see that same thing continue. So, to those that are interested in protesting, please don't allow your righteous and noble message to be compromised and diminished, and the death of Mr. Floyd to be diminished by those that would use this for their own selfish purposes. Secondly, I want to speak to the people that live in those neighborhoods, that had protesters very loudly, very aggressively over the weekend, marching through those neighborhoods. I want to assure you that I've had conversations with the city of Bakersfield. Law enforcement is very well-prepared. They are absolutely at the ready should anything get out of hand. But we as citizens, you know, while we might, we should not be lambs. We need to protect our homes, we need to protect our families, but we are not wolves. There's this analogy in that there are sheepdogs, there are wolves, and there are lambs. We are not wolves, we are not predators, we are not there as those few are to try to disrupt our neighborhoods. But it's okay to be a sheepdog, it's okay to protect what's yours, it's okay to protect your family. But I want to, in our role in protecting our homes, those people in the neighborhoods, it is not your role to necessarily cause or force a confrontation. We have law enforcement there to do that. So I urge those in the neighborhoods to use caution and to rely on law enforcement. Call 911 if you become concerned. I assure you that law enforcement is very actively engaged, and I commend law enforcement for the role that they've played so far. I think they've showed strength, but they've showed great restraint, and I am grateful for that. So I just want to assure people, don't be afraid, you know, if this occurs in your neighborhood, just stay in your home. Law enforcement is keeping an eye on it. Call 911 if you need to, and rely upon our community to come to your aid. Don't force a confrontation, and I'm confident that this will get resolved. So, since that was occurring in neighborhoods in my district, I thought it was appropriate for me to say something this morning, and let's continue to pray for peace and justice in our country. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Maggert. You know, I was very moved yesterday by an article and a report of George Floyd's little brother, who arrived on the scene of the protests yesterday, the scene where George Floyd was murdered. And he arrived, and of course, nobody knew what he was going to say, and certainly, any anger that he would express would have been justifiable to many. He was apparently so grief-stricken that people had to hold him up. The imagery really was, for me, reminiscent Mick of Moses and Aaron. And he told the crowd that violence, of course, was not going to bring his brother back, and that he insisted on a peaceful form of protest. And specific to him was the very peaceful protest of voting. His advice, his direction to the crowd, being held up by other peaceful protesters in civil disobedience for what they are experiencing, was to be active, to vote, to engage in that You know, right here in this community, 52% of African-American children live in poverty. About a year ago, we launched the MLK Community Initiative, and it was in part to highlight the incredible plight of our African-American brothers and sisters. There really are no words to express the horror, the horror of what has taken place in so many corners of this country, as it relates to this community specifically. And I am so moved, I'm so moved by family members of George Floyd, who barely able to stand, would ask of this country an opportunity to participate as good Americans peacefully, for dignity and safety of their young boys. So, I am, I apologize for being emotional up here. You hear the angst of the community, you hear the fear from all corners of this country, authentically afraid, authentically fearful, angry, and you can't help but ask, you know, where do we go from here? And I think that the family of George Floyd are really great Americans. To call for peace, to call for action, and to give direction to the members of their community and other great Americans here, like the police chiefs and sheriffs across this country who are joining forces with other Americans, choosing to see each other as neighbors, as friends, as partners, in this incredible American struggle for democracy and real representation. So, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for 46 seconds. I've been asked to provide a moment of silence by many people for eight minutes and 46 seconds. We won't do that this morning, but I want to remind my colleagues in this community that right here in Kern County, more than half of our African-American brothers and sisters' children live in sheer and utter poverty, and frankly, hopelessness. So I'm going to ask that during this 46 seconds of silence, in memory of this fellow American, to really ask ourselves, what can we do here, right here in Kern County, to address the incredible angst, inequality, and the kind of stuff that just divides us against each other? So, in full respect, love, and admiration for many people in this country who are hurting and are wondering for what's next, I ask you to think now with us, how can we participate in making this community just a little more fair, a little more open, a little more opportunistic Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or input from my colleagues before we move to item number 42? Supervisor Maggert, I see you punched in, is that from before? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well, move to item number 42. That is a proposed resolution providing for local business support through the use of CARES Act funding to waive the tent permit fees for outside dining and retail within Kern County to comply with social distancing guidelines related to COVID-19. Mr. Ryan Alsop and Mr. Zervis will present on this. Thank you for your creativity and thinking about our local restaurant community, and how we can work with them as partners to get back to normal as quickly as we can. Mr. Alsop, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for that, and I want to thank your board for your leadership on this, and particularly your members of your board's ad hoc committee, who are moving the county forward, and industries in Kern County forward. This is part of that effort, and it deals specifically with utilizing CARES Act funding to waive the tent permit fees for outside dining and retail within Kern County, ensuring that we comply with the state's social distancing guidelines and best practices dealing with COVID. With that, we have the fire chief here. His department is front and center in this effort, and I'd like to ask him to come up and give some remarks.
Good morning. The Kern County Fire Department, Kern County Planning Department, Kern County Environmental Health, and the Building Inspection Division of Public Works Department are working together to streamline the process for reopening local businesses under the guidelines of the governor's plan in stage two of reopening. Given the emergency caused by COVID-19, the economic situation, and need for economic recovery, the county understands the devastating impact of restaurant, retail, store closures, and is eager to facilitate necessary measures to quickly rebound and restore the economy. In order to operate under social distancing guidelines that require six-foot spacing in dining and retail areas, businesses can apply with the fire department for a tent permit to allow overflow seating in shopping areas in their designated parking lots. The tents are necessary, given the weather and necessity for outside dining and shopping space caused by COVID-19 social distancing regulations. This proposed resolution is an emergency measure and will provide a waiver of the tent permit fees collected by the fire department and the specific uses for the duration of the local emergency. Ordinarily, under Resolution 2019-320, establishing permits and fees for the Kern County Fire Department Services adopted October 22, 2019, these permit fees constitute the average cost incurred by the county for providing a planned review and inspection fees of $135 and $215 for larger tent areas. Per Government Code Section 8634, the fire chief and the director of emergency services, myself, is granted the authority to issue a recommendation to waive fees to your board that are reasonably related to the protection of life and property as affected by such an emergency. The adoption of this resolution requires a vote of your board. Due to the existing emergency and health and safety benefit to the community, we believe a temporary waiver of the normal tent permit fee for these specific uses is appropriate until... appropriate until the end of the declared emergency. Persuade the state SEQA guidelines, the waiving of tent permit fees is exempt from requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, because the fees described herein are charges by a public agency for the purpose of meeting operation, operating expenses and because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that activity in question may have significant effect on the environment. The proposed resolution has been reviewed and approved by county council in its, in its current form. Therefore, it's recommended that your board make the finding that the project is exempt from further SEQA review. So once again, we are asking that this item is requested, proposed resolution providing for local business support through the CARES Act funding to be waived, the tent permit fees within Kern County in this specific instance.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions by my colleagues of the chief? Okay, thank you. I know you'll remain close by. Mr. Alsop?
That's it, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. We'd like your, we're seeking your approval today of this item.
It requires a vote, I take it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any questions or actions? Supervisor Couch?
No questions. Do you need to go to the public before we make a motion?
Okay, are you going to make a comment Supervisor Couch or are we just going to make the motion? Okay, got it. Can we take public input?
There is no public input.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Couch?
I'll move the staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, the motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. Moving to item 43, this is a proposed standard form of agreement for assistance to Kern County Incorporated Cities for reimbursement of out-of-pocket costs related to COVID-19 public health response. Mr. Alsop or Mr. Zervis? I did it again.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you.
Mr. Zervis.
Mr. Zervis from my office will handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Zervis, my apologies. Good morning.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This morning, this, this item's coming before you for your consideration. On May 5th, 2020, your board approved an initial utilization plan for the $157 million in coronavirus relief funds that the county received as part of the, the federal CARES Act. One component of that plan was $20 million that was allocated to help cities, incorporated cities within Kern County to deal with their out-of-pocket third-party costs related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And working with the cities over the past month or so in developing an agreement and talking with them about their costs, there has been one slight modification to, to the plan that we're bringing before you today. We have developed this agreement along with county council and incorporate, and, and including the cities. The, the change here is that we're actually recommending that, that city staff costs be an eligible criteria or eligible cost category for reimbursement. So originally, it was simply out-of-pocket costs, meaning if they bought computers for telecommuting, if they bought PPE to protect their employees, if they were out contracting for services to deal with legal implications or, or assisting with the, with the enforcement of the local health order or the statewide health order, all those things would be, would be considered eligible. But we had not included direct staff time primarily because it was, it was really the county's role in dealing with, with the public health response through the public health department and emergency operations center. It was also unclear from a federal level exactly what type of, or what categories of, of, of public wages would be considered eligible under the, under this, under this funding source. And because the county is responsible for these funds ultimately to the federal government, we thought it best at the time to, to avoid that category altogether. Subsequently, there's been guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department that, that has provided more clarity on, on what, what, what staff costs would be eligible and ineligible. And so we feel comfortable moving forward and allowing that cost category as, as an eligible cost that's reimbursable through this program as long as it's, as long as it's consistent with the federal guidelines. And so the agreement that's before you today includes reimbursement not only for out-of-pocket costs, but also for staff costs that are deemed related to or in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So, so the agreement has been prepared by county council to ensure that if anything that's reimbursed under this contract is later deemed ineligible by the federal government and the federal government notifies the, the county, then they, we would notify the, the cities that had claimed those expenses that were deemed ineligible and the cities would then be responsible for repaying the county immediately. If, if they, if they refuse to do that or something precluded them from doing that, we would have the ability through this agreement in order to, to recover our funds from any pass-through monies that go through the county to the local cities, including property tax. So we're fairly well-protected in the case that something is later deemed ineligible. So we, we trust our cities in their due diligence to ensure that, that their claims for reimbursement under this agreement will be eligible. We feel the county is adequately protected. This provides $20 million to help our, our local governments here in Kern County deal with their costs associated with the pandemic. In the staff report or in the board letter, there is a breakdown for each incorporated city as to how much money that, that they're eligible for and they're, and I've, I've spoken with those cities and they're anxious to, to move forward with this reimbursement process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the, the board or the public would have at this, this time. And I'll, I'll leave that to you, Madam Chair.
As usual, excellent, succinct, thorough. Thank you very much. Colleagues, I see Supervisor Couch?
That's where the last.
Previously, Supervisor Scrivner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Zervis, thank you for your report. Just want to ask Madam Counsel, Mr. Zervis alluded to property tax. So are there, is there some leverage then we have? Not, I, I know all of our cities are going to operate in good faith here and, and spend the money according to the parameters of the CARES Act, but we do have sufficient protection. And does that have to do with our tax split agreement in case some of these, these funds were, you know, it's, he, he talked about property tax, so would that be through the tax split agreement?
So some, if you don't mind, I can, I think I can answer that question. The agreement, so the county receives and distributes all property taxes within the county. And, and so at any one time, the county has funds that, that get remitted to the cities on a, on a monthly basis typically for property taxes. This agreement specifically allows the withholding of property taxes from those cities if there's an expense that's deemed ineligible by the federal government and the city has not repaid the county. So the city will first have the opportunity to repay the county. If for any reason that doesn't happen, we have the ability to withhold any pass-through funding source specifically including property taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Scrivner. Supervisor Gleason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great job, Jim. Thank you very much. Very complex situation and you managed to break it down to parade rest farce and I, it made it simple so even I understood what you're doing. I know that the feedback I'm getting from my folks, my constituents are very positive and they appreciate all the work county's doing with this. So I will make a recommendation to support your recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Without further comment, do we have public input? Kathy Kraus?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. No public input. We close the public hearing, return to the board. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Supervisor Maggard, can you reconfirm your vote? Thank you. The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay. It carries. Thank you, gentlemen, really, for all of your hard work. That brings us to the end of this morning's agenda. We are going to adjourn to closed session for items 64 and 65 and we'll be back at 2:00 PM, of course. So Supervisor Gleason, thank you for your motion without objections ordered.